Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of the Rondicoid Zoning Board of Appeals in 2019. Before we get underway with the cases on our agenda, there are a few administrative matters I need to take care of. First, in the event of a fire, the fire exit is located to your left. If there's a fire, you'll receive notification of that fact. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a synopsis, sum and substance, of what has transpired, not as a transcript. So in order to assist in making that as accurate as possible, when you come to the podium, you would please identify yourself by name and speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the items on the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda by the table near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, then pause, raise their right hand to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the case, the members of the board have an opportunity to ask questions or engage in discussion with the applicant or their representative. Once that process has been concluded, we then open it up for public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board should come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. People who are participating in the public input portion are not sworn, only the applicants. We have three categories. We take those who wish to speak in favor of the application first, then we hear from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, and the third category is those who'd like to talk to us about something related to the application but don't have an opinion one way or the other about the particular application that we're considering. Once all the public input has been heard, the applicant or their representative will get an opportunity to respond if they desire. Once that's concluded, we then close the hearing, continue on to the next case. Once all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess, and then we will return for deliberations on the cases in the order of the applicants that are still present. So if the applicant for the first case has left, but the applicant for the second case is here, we would take the second case first, then we would go on to the next case for which the applicant is present. When we get through all the applicants who remain present, we'll go back to the top and take them in the order they appear for applicants who are no longer present. No further input is allowed during the deliberative portion unless the board specifically requests it, but you're welcome to stay and listen if you wish. If you wish to leave but are interested in knowing what the board's decision was, you can catch us on TV, or you can call the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after nine, and they will be glad to tell you what we decided. So we will now move to our first case on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1901-1. Upon the matter of request by Rayleigh Van Eppes for a special use permit to harbor nine hens with coop pursuant to section 23570 of Town Code on premises 288 Tarrington Road in an R2 residential district.
My name is Raleigh Van Eppes, and I reside at 288 Tarrington.
Raise your right hand, Mr. Van Eppes. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So you would like to house nine hens on your property?
Correct.
Can you... Have you watched or checked into what we've done with these kinds of applications in the past?
I've seen two.
We have generally limited it to four. Can you explain to me why you would like nine as opposed to a smaller number?
Yes, I can. So most chickens on average will produce three to four eggs per week, and so in the interest of efficiency, around five to six would be preferred for maximal output per the space used.
Can you live with four?
Yes.
Pretty much everything else that you've put in there seems to track what we've done in the past. Veterinary check every year, the town inspection every year, digging down with the wire into the ground. Food's very important, no outside storage or open storage.
So like rodent-proof containers?
Yeah.
Is that permissible?
Although I don't know what rodent-proof containers exist. They seem to go through metal, plastic.
Metal?
Oh, yes. Chew a metal can.
Impressive. Okay.
Yeah. So most of the people that have done it in the past have put them in the garage or something like that, in the basement or wherever, to further protect it.
I noticed on our map that there's two possible locations. The proposed is right behind the house in that little El Cove area, and then there's another possible site, alternative site out in the far corner. Is there a reason for one or the other, or can you explain?
Yeah. The version that you have of the property map, does it have the third alternate location next to the shed?
It has a second alternate location.
Okay. If it's okay, I've since revised my location, and I would prefer to put it next to the shed, which is actually under a pine tree, because that space currently isn't being used and will never be used, except in this case.
So that would be, as you're facing the front of your house, the shed's in the far right corner of the property, right?
If you're in the backyard facing away from the house, it's in the far right. Correct. Yep.
And you want the coop to go to the left of the shed, or do you want the coop to go to the front of the shed?
To the left.
To the left of the shed.
Where it says metal shed now.
Where it says metal shed, right in that area.
Exactly.
Okay. And where's this pine tree?
The pine tree is right where the text metal shed is.
Okay. Will the coop fit underneath the pine tree?
Yeah, I'm gonna build it myself, so there's no concern there.
And the door to the shed is where?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And the run would be where?
The run would be next to the coop.
But between the coop and the shed, or between the coop and the other side?
The design I'm using has the coop around four feet off the ground, so in addition to being under the coop, it will also surround the pine tree.
Oh, okay. Are you gonna fence off the rest of the yard?
Yep. So the property is currently around 80% fenced in, and I'm gonna be applying for a permit soon to fence in the rest.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, just a point of correction. I think chickens on average lay between five to seven eggs a week. And from what you showed me, I thought you were putting it in front of the pine tree. I'm so confused of how tall. You say you're four feet off the ground, so you're gonna trim the pine tree?
Correct. And just a minor point, the breeds that I'm interested in are three to four. There are...
What breeds are those?
So there's Brahms, there's Orpingtons, there are... And then there's like the Rhode Island Reds, which are higher producing hens. And that would be the four to five.
Have you had opportunity to talk to your neighbors about this?
Yep. I've talked to three closest surrounding neighbors, and none of them had any superpressing concerns.
How about unsuperpressing concerns?
Yeah, of course. I believe...
Such as?
Yeah. One of the concerns was pests, and I made it clear that I won't be leaving food scattered around the yard that would attract rodents or anything like that. And that pretty much cleared that up, as far as I know.
Any other non-superpressing concerns that were expressed?
Not to my knowledge.
I do know that in the past, we've had neighbor complaints of noise from hens, and we've gone out, several of us went out to listen.
Okay.
And heard dogs more than hens. So I don't think that would be another non-superpressing concern if that was raised. But it looks like your property's gonna be surrounded by stockade fencing, so it's not going to sight anything, because they won't be seen, and they're pretty quiet, right?
The breeds I chose are generally docile, and they're not gonna be super loud.
All right. What about the number? We talked about nine, we've talked about four.
Well, I don't... I recall one case off of between, I can't think of the name of the road, but it backs up to the expressway, to 104, that...
Quite a few.
Where she had seven, or eight, or nine, or 10, or whatever, they'd been there for a while, and we told her that she couldn't add any, and she had to get them down to four as soon as nature put them down. But you don't have any, right?
Correct.
All right, so we're talking new, new-to-you hens.
So are we limiting to four?
Well, we'll figure that out in deliberation. We'll kick around the numbers. Are you gonna handle their droppings and stuff to get rid of and dispose of?
So the design of the coop that I'm going to pursue has a wide swinging door, which allows for easy access to the coop, and it's super easy to clean. Just scoop out all of the litter, and then it's easy to replace it.
You're gonna dispose of it? Not in the yard, any place you're gonna get rid of it?
Yeah, in the trash.
On your design, you showed that, unless I'm missing something, how big is your run again? Is the size that you make it?
It's gonna be around 10 by 10.
Okay. And if it's gonna be around the pine tree, it's gonna be at least four feet from that back fence, right?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, that's about 100 square feet, and you need about 129 for four chickens, so it'll be pretty close.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything further that you wanted to add?
That's all.
Okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about chickens, runs, fences, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1901-2. Upon the matter of request by Dennis and Suzette Langston for an area variance to construct a detached garage exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage on premises 63 Breezeway Drive in an R3 residential district.
Good evening. I'm Suzette Langston, lives at 63 Breezeway Drive.
Dennis Langston, 63 Breezeway Drive.
Do each of you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Langston, you explained to me that now that your wife is done doing all the yard work, she's gonna get rid of the shed and let you have a garage, right?
Yep. Next 25 years is his.
Next 25 years is his? That sounds good.
Fair deal, right?
Sounds fair. And the only thing that you need permission from us for is to cover a little more of your lot than would otherwise be allowed, is that right?
That's correct.
And I think from the flags that you had laid out that you showed me, that it's not gonna disturb the real nice landscaping that you've done in that.
She changes it every year.
Yeah, it'll look beautiful by the time I'm done with it.
Oh, okay.
After the garage is built.
All right.
So the structure that's there is gonna be taken down?
Yes.
And the new one will be in the same spot?
Same spot.
I wondered about that, because I pulled up, and I thought, is there already a garage here?
It's a big shed.
A shed. The garage would be four times the size of that shed, 16 by 20.
Ah, good usable space. The nice-looking building, is that the one that you're gonna put up?
Yes, exactly. G.F. Sawyer from Hilton is the builder, and that was from his website, and he's the one that's going to build our garage.
Oh, nice.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
We have a letter in our packet with four neighbors. It looks like they're in favor.
Northeast, south, and west.
Yep.
Covered all the bases.
Yeah, the gentleman right across from us to the north just died, so I couldn't get his, but I got the next one down the road.
Well, he also won't have any reactions.
And nobody can, besides those people, nobody else can even really see it. It would look the same as our shed from the driveway. We have a six-foot stackade fence around our yard.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to any public input. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about garages? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next case on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1901-3. Upon the matter of request by Premier Sign Systems, acting as agent for 2008 Hudson LLC for an area variance to install an illuminated freestanding sign exceeding maximum permitted square footage and height on premises 2008 Hudson Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Good evening. Nelson Baranas, Premier Sign Systems, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I've been attending these type of meetings for over 30 years now. I have never had a hankering for a bacon, egg, and cheese sandwich as much as I do now. I'm sorry. I'm really, I want one, right now. Anyways, I'm here representing Lattimore Physical Therapy at 2008 Hudson Avenue, and everyone has a drawing, I hope. Okay? As you see the drawing, we are asking for a little more square footage, being that six square feet is not even me, and we're asking for a little bit more. Double-sided it. We're also asking for it to be internally illuminated with LEDs. We no longer use lamps. It's like plugging in a toaster as far as energy goes. And as you see, everything is pretty much on your application and on the drawing. Be glad to take any questions.
My only question, Nelson, is right here, the height. There's some comparisons. Somebody sent in a letter today.
Excuse me, Mr. LePerry, can you use your microphone, please? Thank you.
The hip group sent in some examples of signage all in that neighborhood, and they had some concerns of the height and the width, and they show a whole bunch of different examples. Some are similar in size, some are smaller. And I guess my only question, I don't see a big problem with the size of the sign, but does it have to be up six foot high? Is there anywhere it can be brought down a little closer to the ground so that it's not six foot tall? I see the bottom stonework is two and a half feet up, and then there's about another foot on top of that. Is there a way that that can be shortened by a foot, foot and a half, and keep the similar look to the sign?
Well, of course, I can. It's a matter of aesthetics. What we're looking for is, it's basically as tall as I am, and driving, you know, just to make a quick statement, a lot of these other signs that were listed on here and have done, I'm just gonna tell you my experience. I've been doing this 30 years, people don't put any thought in it. They just throw a sign up there. They don't think about what the pedestrians, general public is driving back and forth, what you're looking for. And in my experience, six-foot height for a ground-type sign like this, in this district for this type of industry, this type of business, when you're in your car, and nowadays trucks, cars, what have you, that is the perfect level. If it's too low, if it's too high, it's too high, you don't read it, you're like this. If it's too low, you're like this. You wanna be at your site right here when you're sitting down. Can I prove it to you?
It's about the same size as all the other ones. It's the height that's the question.
Well, let me, if you don't mind, the sign itself is three foot by six. Okay. The reason why I added that three foot is I got that cladding below it, and then you should have a little space that's aesthetically pleasing for that extra foot there, for it to look proper. If I brought that all the way down to the stone, I didn't like it when we did it on the computer. But I'm looking at some, are you talking about the Helping Rondicoid Plans in Progress letter?
Yes.
Okay. That's a wonderful thing. I don't know these people, so I don't know who they are, but regardless. But they're saying the sign size on the first one, Rondicoid, which we did, Premier Sign did years ago, is three foot nine, but that's the sign itself, not the overall height. They didn't give me the overall height. It is taller than three foot nine. And then some of these other ones, you see five foot two, but that's the size of the sign, not the size of the height. I know this, right? Then you go to four, that's the sign, not the height. So they put all these sizes, they're wonderful, but they didn't put the overall height from grade. That's just the sign. So mine is three by eight, or three by six, sorry, but it's overall six-foot height. Also, there's always a snow thing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if I bring it down to whatever, we get three feet of snow, that's not fun. These other places, you know, Mr. LePerry, when they have those lights, what are they doing in snowing? They're not going out there, maybe one, but now it's seven o'clock at night, poor guy's coming from Brighton, he doesn't know where he's going, and he can't see the sign, because it's not lit.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I took a walk at the property today, and looking at specifically backlighting, and I kind of disagree with this letter, because the only real residence is the apartments across the street, the residential places set back, and I think there's a tree or something in between the property and the view for the sign. So that was one of my questions I had when I went out, was to look, if this is lit, what would be disturbing at night? I didn't see anything. It's right at the beginning of the commercial strip, so I didn't have a problem with the backlight sign.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd just like to talk to us about the application?
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Very well.
Good evening, Board. Jeff Goldblatt, 128 Park Side Crescent. I am a founding member and co-chair of Helping Rondicoid Plan for Progress, the hip group, as we begin our 22nd year of success. I'm the individual who went out and measured all of these signs last Tuesday, or Thursday, rather, on a rather bitterly cold day, much as what we're having this evening. And I wanted to compare apples to apples, so I measured the actual physical sign itself, where the lettering is, which is what the Lattimore sign is, not the overall height with the posts and anything underneath. So I tried to do an apples-to-apples comparison with the existing signs in this neighborhood versus what Lattimore is proposing. If you look on page one of the letter, we did not question or challenge the size of the sign, rather, we raised a couple of issues in regards to internally versus externally lit. There are any number of examples above and beyond the ones that we cited on Hudson Avenue that have been successfully done. I would challenge the idea that this particular section of Hudson Avenue is a commercial district since you have residences immediately next door and across the street on either side. The other thing that the board hasn't addressed that we would like to get clarification on is the base and the landscaping as shown in the rendering. The stone purported base is not actual stone, but graphic wraparound on the bases, and we showed and noted in our comments a couple of examples where actual stone was used. We think this would enhance the appearance of the sign. And also, the landscaping in the rendering is not defined, so we would like some clarification as far as what that may be. Other than that, we don't feel that the sign is out of proportion. present it to you. Is that correct?
No.
Oh. Well, then I'm mistaken. Okay.
We're not involved in landscaping. We're not involved in
Oh, okay.
Material selection.
Gotcha.
We're involved in how big a sign you can have.
Okay.
How tall a sign.
I'm just replying to him. So there's no landscaping, okay?
No, no, no. I understand, but
That's gone.
That's, yeah. There's, sometimes we will suggest
I understand.
landscaping to soften something that we might approve, but
This doesn't really need it because of the stone effect. It doesn't really need it. Of course, you could do it, make a big thing around it, and he doesn't feel, I mean, I agree with him. It's kind of, not a waste of money, but it's, you know, why? I mean, look, maybe two years from now, if he wants to, he'll do it. But right now, he doesn't want to do it.
Okay.
All right?
All right. Thanks, sir. We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, and I believe that concludes all the cases on our agenda tonight. So we will take a, we will reconvene at 7:40. Okay, we're not, um, Masoners, but I hire Masoners and I did the one at Town of Greece for their sign. That was like $30,000. Uh, it's crazy. Uh, what was the other thing?
Landscaping.
Landscaping, no landscaping, sorry. My artist always throws landscaping in just to do, when he does his drawings, honest to God, we don't even, nothing. He doesn't need anything around there, so I can delete that a hundred percent. And if he wanted landscaping, I understand, he's got to have a drawing done by a landscaper, whomever, and they come and present it to you. Is that correct?
No.
Oh. Well, then I'm mistaken, okay.
We're not involved in landscaping, we're not involved in-
Oh, okay.
Material selection.
Gotcha.
We're involved in how big a sign you can have.
Okay.
How tall a sign.
I'm just replying to him, so there's no landscaping, okay? That's gone.
That's, yeah, there's, sometimes we will suggest-
I understand.
-landscaping to soften something that we might approve, but-
This doesn't really need it because of the, the stone effect. Uh, it doesn't really need it. Of course, you could do it, make a big thing around it and, uh, he doesn't feel, I mean, I agree with him, it's kind of, oh, not a waste of money, but it's, you know, why? I mean, look, maybe two years from now, if he wants to, he'll, he'll do it, but right now, he's, he doesn't want to do it.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thanks, sir. We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, and I believe that concludes all the cases on our agenda tonight. So we will take a, uh, we will reconvene at, uh, 7:40. So I guess it becomes academic. So the first case on our agenda for which the applicant remains present is 288 Tarrington Road. This is an application for a special use permit. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? I think Mr. Antini wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve this application with the following findings. No more than four chickens, hens, we should say. Um, the coop is going to be put over by the shed and with the run and everything. You have to go down, was it two feet we talked about going down with everything? Two feet with wire down below, so no animals can get in there. I don't know if there's very many feral cats in your area or not, but around where I am, there's quite a few. Um, also that the, the, um, food is kept in a separate container, probably preferably metal and separate from the cage. You know, you might want to be putting into your shed and your shed closed and it's covered. Um, same thing with the water or whatever else you're going to do. And as far as, you know, with the droppings and all that, you know, that they're, it's kept clean and they're taken away. And, um, it looks like where you're, you're going to be away from most of the houses themselves back in that corner, so, um, there's a little bit of odor sometimes, you know, could be, you know, not that much, but that's, that's another concern. Checked by a vet, you know, every year, and I think once a year for our town to come out. And was there missing anything else?
Um.
Number four?
I think that was it.
Yep.
Well, I've got it right here in front of me. Oh, and- No roosters.
Yes, no roosters.
Four feet from the property lines. That was it.
I'll second.
And I, I just want to make another comment, just, you know, there's a lot, we have a lot of people that are coming in now from the backyard and salmonella is a thing that can happen. And I, you know, I just Googled and I got this veterinary thing and it talked about what we do, basically what we came up with our, by ourselves is a good thing that followed by the CDC and everything, but it still happens. But they talk about if you go into that coop, you don't take those shoes and go into the house and, uh, you know, make sure you wash. We have a lot of times kids handling them and stuff like that. Every time they go and touch them, especially young kids, they, you know, they tend to put their fingers in their mouths and everything. That's where you're starting to see the salmonella come up more and more. So just, you know, you've had them around you all your life, you understand a lot of that stuff, but when it gets into the neighborhood and neighborhood kids are coming, you might want to make sure they got something to clean their hands with before they leave your property so they, you know, they don't get sick too.
All right, so that was seconded by Mr. Perry. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, nobody's absent, the entire board is present. Next application relates to 63 Breezeway Drive. This is a type two action for, uh, seeker purposes. The, the, this is an application for an area variance to have, uh, detached garage that exceeds the maximum lot coverage. Anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make the-
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, I'll make a motion, 63 Breezeway Drive, that we approve this. Uh, I don't believe it'll change the character of the neighborhood. I believe it is a self-created issue, uh, because they do want a garage, but I don't think that would stop us or any of us from having a garage in, in their proper spot. Um, I do not believe it'll, uh, hurt the environment, uh, and it's not a detriment to, um, uh, any environmental issues, um, in the neighborhood. So with those, I would, uh, say we, uh, I don't believe it is a substantial amount of variance also. Um, that's the last one. So based on that, I think we should approve it.
I'll second it, Mike.
Thank you, Russ.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is all present. Brings us to our third application, which is with respect to 2008 Hudson Avenue, the application for an area variance for the sign at Lattimore Physical Therapy. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, approve the variance with the, uh, following findings. Uh, the sign is proposed will not, uh, result in any adverse change, uh, to the character of the neighborhood. There are signs of a similar size and nature throughout, uh, between that location and, uh, Titus Avenue. Uh, the alternative that, uh, would not require a variance would defeat the purpose of the sign since it, given the, uh, logistics of the name and, uh, location would, uh, be difficult if not possible for people to see as driving by. Uh, it is not a substantial request, uh, in relation to, uh, the other, uh, signs in the area, it's a similar size. Uh, it's not going to have an adverse, uh, physical or environmental, uh, effect, and it is, uh, it's not a self-created situation, or if it is a self-created situation, that in fact is not the one that should result in the denial of a bearing.
Next seven years, thank you.
So are we, thank you. So the minutes from the December meeting, did everyone receive them and have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Any, uh, suggested changes or revisions? Seeing none, I'll move that we, uh, adopt the minutes or approve the minutes as prepared.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention, so the motion carries, six votes in favor, no, no opposed, one abstention. Mr. Robson abstained because he wasn't present at the meeting. And that concludes our business for the first month of the year. Uh, I will not be here in February, so I'll look forward to seeing you all again in March.
You have a good, uh-
I just want to make one comment to the Pizos. I want to thank them for sending us a thank you, you know.
Oh, yes, that was a very nice-
Yeah.
And it's, it's pretty nice, you know, so.
Yep.
It was very nice. First time in all the years we've been on the board, or I've been on the board.
We've gotten feedback in the past, but that's the first time I think we've been thanked.
First one.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Ironicoid Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access. We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Ironicoid Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.